It is September 22nd, 2020. Before we start our meeting, we're going to ask Councilmember Hens to offer a word of prayer.
Sure, go pray with me. Father, we push pause in the day and we ask that you would give us wisdom, that you would give us favor. We are so grateful for protecting the city the way that you have. We ask that you would reinforce and encourage and build up our frontline members of the healthcare teams around the city that are helping us fight off this pandemic. We ask that you would give us favor as a community to recover very, very quickly. We ask that you give us wisdom and discernment to make the decisions that we need to make tonight. Give us wisdom to make decisions that are the best, not just for the short term, but the long term. We love you and we trust you. Amen to them.
Amen.
Thank you. I'll now call our meeting to order of September 22nd, 2020. And first on our agenda is open forum, and I'll ask.
I'm sorry, I accidentally muted you.
You muted me?
I'm so sorry.
So where did we leave off? At the prayer?
Ask me if we had open forum.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. So do we have anyone that has signed up for open forum?
Again, I apologize, and no ma'am, we do not.
It's not a problem, thank you. And moving on to our consent agenda, if council wants to remove something for discussion, they may do so. If not, the chair will entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve.
I will second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as it is presented. If no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Onto our regular agenda. We have a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the boundaries of rezoning district. And we will hear from Elena Shapen, our city planner. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I will share my screen now so that you guys can see the PowerPoint. And my computer is being very iffy. Let's see if I can get this to work. All right. All right, can everyone see the PowerPoint presentation? Yes, all right, wonderful. Again, thank you, Mayor. This request is to rezone approximately 0.29 acres of property located at 614 East Star Avenue from R4 multifamily to M Medical. The property is located on the south side of East Star Avenue between Reggae Street and Garner Street. There is a single-family residence located on the subject property, and the applicant plans to repurpose the existing structure for an office use. The surrounding land uses include medical offices and a church along Reggae Street, a single-family and multifamily rental properties along Garner Street, and SFA facilities through the north across East Star Avenue. The area includes a mix of zoning districts, including a multifamily R4 to the east and south, medical zoning to the south and west, and then agricultural zoning to the north across East Star Avenue. The medical use district is intended to accommodate those business activities associated with or related to the medical profession. The medical zoning is compatible with the zoning and developed uses in the area and shouldn't adversely impact any of the adjacent property.
Elena?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt you. So your PowerPoint is still showing your introductory slide, Agenda Item Number Five?
Oh, really? Okay, well, hold on just a moment, I apologize.
Not a problem.
I'm going to stop sharing and see if I can do this a different way. Okay. You know what, I think it's because I have two screens and I had it on the wrong screen and it was making everything a little wonky. Okay, let's try this again.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize for that.
Not a problem.
All right, can you see the slides moving?
Yes.
Perfect, all right. Well, again, this is a request for a rezoning from R4 multifamily to M Medical at 614 East Star Avenue. The property again is located on the south side of East Star Avenue between Reggae Street and Garner Street. There is an existing single-family residence located on the property, and the applicant does intend to repurpose the existing structure for an, for a office or a medical office use. The surrounding land uses include medical offices and a church facility on Reggae Street. There's also some single-family and multifamily rental properties along Garner Street. And then on the north side of Star Avenue, you see SFA facilities. The area also includes a mix of zoning, including R4 multifamily to the east and south. M Medical zoning is located to the west and south, and then to the north across. And East Star Avenue is agricultural zoning. The medical use district that's being proposed by the applicant is intended to accommodate those business activities that are associated with or related to the medical profession. And the requested zoning is compatible with other zoning and land uses in the area. The future land use map does designate this property as central city mixed use, which is described as the central core of the city in and around the traditional downtown area. It includes a mix of retail, office, residential, and public uses, all permitted together to encourage a mixed-use walkable development. The proposed zoning of medical is consistent with those land uses that are described under that future land use category. So staff finds that the request is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. When reviewing that application for a zone change, the following conditions shall be considered. These are outlined on your screen. These include compatibility with adjacent land uses, providing for orderly growth and development for surrounding property, providing for adequate infrastructure such as utilities and roadways. It includes the design of drives and parking in order to prevent nuisances. It also includes site design standards such as lighting and landscaping. And of course, the request being in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The staff does find that the request meets the review criteria and does recommend approval of the request from R4 multifamily to M Medical. On September 3rd, staff sent out, staff sent out seven notices to property owner, property owners within the 200-foot notification area. And these properties are highlighted by the red circle indicated on your screen. And staff put together a land use exhibit to indicate kind of the occupancy makeup of the properties that were included in the notification. So the purple stars are, of course, SFA facilities. The red stars indicate property that's owned, operated by the church. The blue stars indicate a medical office or medical clinic. The yellow stars indicate a single-family property, but that's rental, it's not owner, it's not owner occupied. And the orange stars indicate multifamily, which is also rental property. And actually, the area that you see with the orange stars, that's actually all part of a unified multifamily development that includes a mix of structure types. So there are some single-family structures, some duplex structures, but it all operates as a single unified multifamily development. The staff didn't receive any direct contact, but I know that the applicant has been working with the adjacent property owner to work out things such as access and parking. And I'll let Mr. Collins, the applicant, speak to that in just a few minutes. But we just wanted to show you kind of the makeup of those properties within the notification area and who received those notices. This item was heard of the Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting on September 14th, and they did recommend approval of their request unanimously, five to zero. And that concludes staff's presentation. Again, I know Mr. Ron Collins, the applicant, is in attendance. If the council has any questions, and I'm going to stop sharing my screen now and open up for questions in the public hearing.
Okay, so do you think there is anything, Mr. Collins is going to say it is germane for him to speak before I open the public hearing? Or can he speak, you know, for in the, in the public hearing?
I will note that.
Your microphone just went off, Elena. Cannot hear you. I think what we'll do is, Mr. Collins, I'm going to let you speak after I open the public hearing, and then we will, you will also remain and be available for questions from council. Is that okay with you?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. So I will now open the public hearing. And is there, I guess, Jan, is there anyone that we know of that wants to speak for or against this zoning change?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. Mr. Collins, why don't you go ahead and, and just make a brief statement, and then I'll open it up for questions from council?
Sure, Mayor. This property is controlled by the Episcopal Church of Nacogdoches. It's actually owned by the Protestant Episcopal Church Council of the Diocese of Texas. It was done that way when Mr. Mass deeded it to that entity a number of years ago. It has been, it's served as the blood center of East Texas a long time ago. And then more recently was a residential type property. The church had, you know, during that particular time, had operated it, at least it, and with not much success, spent a lot more, had a lot more damage than we were able to get as far as rent. And so we made the decision that we wanted to go to something a little more commercial oriented. Medical seemed to be the right fit. We talked to Mark Sal, who was adjacent to us, it operates the foot clinic there, and he was very supportive of us. There's a little bit of the property that he's committed to us to allow us to use for paved parking. And then we will have some parking paved in the rear of that facility as well. In addition, he'll grant us an easement to come off Star Street and use that particular lane that comes off between our properties for additional ingress and egress to our property. So we, we think that we'll be able to have a good neighbor. I did talk to Mark a little bit after he saw the notices go up. And he just wanted to make sure that it was still the same as it was when he and I originally talked, and I assured him it was. We've not done any of the actual easements or any of those type things yet. It would be contingent on this being approved. At that point, I'll get with some surveyors and, and do that according to our discussions. But we should have space for approximately 10 parking places without infringing on any of his, and then have that access lane coming off of Star to be able to serve that property. I think as long as we didn't overextend ourselves into his parking, there shouldn't be any issues, you know, between the two of us. And if there were, we would try to remedy those if that ever came up. He, I want to try to make sure that we keep him happy.
Okay, terrific, thank you so much. Mr. Bolden, do you have any questions or comments?
No, well, the property is still going to be owned by the church. Are they leasing it out for a medical building?
The, the church will contract, I believe, with probably Jonathan Dunn, with Charles Poole Real Estate, to find us a tenant. And we will look for some, what I would hope to be a low-volume, commercial, medical-type occupant to be able to lease it. The church would like to lease it and generate some revenue. We, we, while we don't own it, the diocese will allow us to keep any money that we generate from it. So we will do some improvement to it. We will have the tenant do some improvement to it, and then we'll collect some rent and hopefully make it a lot better than it is now.
Thank you.
Mr. Hens, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, Mayor, just a couple. The, the property right now, just to clarify, it's vacant?
It is vacant, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and this might be a question for Ms. Shapen. You said there were seven notices and, and we heard, well, I don't know if we can hear you. Can we hear you? Can you hear me? Yes, okay. The, I saw that you, you heard nothing from any property owners within the 200 feet minimum statutory requirement. Out of all of the, the people, you said that they were rent, that there were rentals, right? The ones that weren't medical offices that were actually single and multifamily housing?
Yes, and actually, if you, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to pull my, my screen back up because I want to show you that exhibit that had the 200-foot buffer and it had the different color coded stars. So. So all of the properties that you see highlighted with the orange star, those are separate properties, but they're all the same owner. So those are all a single owner that received a single notice for all the properties that they own. The same is true for the yellow stars. Those are all separately, those are all separate structures and separate lots, but they're all owned by the same rental company. And so in essence, it really is, you know, five properties, but one property owner. The same thing for, for the red stars. And actually, the, the blue star farther to the south, those are all owned by the diocese. And then the SFA property, of course, is all the same property owner. So while it looks like there are several properties in the area, there was, you know, there's very few as far as like property owner and notices versus the actual parcels. So, so no ma'am, we, we did not actually receive any direct contact. I know that Mr. Collins was in contact with the property owner to the left, the doctor's office, as soon as they received their, their notice, which isn't uncommon for people to recognize the name on the notice and they have a relationship to contact that person directly in lieu of contacting staff. We always ask applicants, if you do, if you do a contact from a neighbor, to please let them know to extend that to staff so we can make a note of it and we can make a summary of all those different oppositions or contacts and support. But that doesn't always happen. And so to answer your question, no, staff didn't receive any direct contact from any of the property owners.
The property notice, they only go to the owners though, not to, to, not to the actual physical address of the property surrounding the, the parcel to be rezoned or requesting to be rezoned, right?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, all right, that's it, that's all I got.
Okay.
Ms. Shapen, I have, of course, and now this is being considered for rezone to medical. Do any of the landscaping have to be changed, et cetera?
It depends on the site improvements that are made. And there's actually some existing mature trees located along East Star Avenue. And the applicant, once he adds parking, those street tree requirements will come into play just like any other commercial development. But our ordinance actually allows you to get credit if you preserve existing mature trees on the site. So looking at what's already there, the applicant may, whoever it is, whoever ends up rebuilding the property, may have to, may have to plant one or two small trees. But based on what's there, a lot of things that are preserved could satisfy the requirements. But to answer your question, yes, any redevelopment or expansion of the property, because it's going to be zoned, zoned commercial, would trigger our commercial landscaping requirements, which prepare, which requires street trees along the frontage roads.
And we will make everyone aware of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions or discussions, Chair would entertain a motion.
That's Agenda Item A.
Yes, A.
Well, I make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the boundaries of zoning district within the city from R4 multifamily to medical for property portions lot two and three block to the blunt estate subdivision. In other words, Agenda Item A.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item A as it is presented in our agenda. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, thank you, members of the commission. Elena, thank you all so much for your help. Appreciate you very much.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Agenda Item B is a public hearing. Consider an ordinance amending the terms within a planned development district within the city of Nacogdoches. And again, we will hear from Elena Shapen.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Sharing my screen now. All right, is my, is my presentation displaying correctly?
It's the first slide that just says Agenda Item Number Five.
Five A, okay, we're going to go to the next one. All right, thank, thank you again. Yes, this item is to amend the terms of a planned development district for Austin Hills subdivision. And before we get into the request, I just want to go over a little bit about the process for a, for the approval for a planned development district and the amendment of a planned development district since we, since we don't do them every day. So planned development districts are a three-step process. The first step is the PD concept plan, which is reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and then ultimately approved by city council. It establishes the actual district boundaries as well as the proposed land uses and any densities that are being requested. The second process is the development plan. This is a little bit more detailed. It actually provides a preliminary layout of land use boundaries, preliminary building locations, parking, open, open space, streets, and so forth and so on. That's also reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and is then approved by city council. And then the PD site plan is the construction plan or the construction drawings for building permit, and that's reviewed and approved by our Planning and Zoning Commission only. The process to amend a planned development district is the same process to adopt a planned development district. So in this regard, the applicant is requesting to amend those terms and conditions that were approved as part of the development plan. And so we have to go back through that public hearing process, just like whenever they first established the zoning district. Just to provide a little background about the process and why we're here today. So the Austin Hills subdivision is zoned PD planned development district. The primary use is as a, a single-family residential neighborhood. There is a vacant church on the property that's currently planned for a future senior center. And the neighborhood is still being developed, it's still under construction, and there are several lots that are still vacant today. When the concept plan and development plan was approved in 2004, there was a condition put on the PD that the residential portion of the planned development district would be developed under the R3 two-family development standards with an additional condition that the side yards would be reduced to three feet. So in the traditional R3 zoning district, you have a 20-foot front yard setback, a 10-foot rear setback, and a six-foot side. This PD development plan was approved with a reduction from six feet to three feet for the side yard setbacks. Shortly after that, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the PD site plan, which in this case is the subdivision plot for the property and what we, what we know today as the Austin Hills subdivision. But tonight's request is again amendment to the terms and conditions of the development plan, and this affects six lots. These, these lots are highlighted on your screen. They include lots one and 10 of block one, lots one and 10 of block two, and lots one and 18 of block three. The lot sizes within the subdivision vary with the smaller lots located on the northern face of the development along Eric Drive and Emily Court. And then on the south side of the development, along Mc, Mclemore Court are the larger lots. For the zoning ordinance, whenever lots have double frontage, or in other words, a corner lot where you have street frontages running through from one side to the other side of the lot, then you have to provide a front yard setback on both street frontages, which means that in this case, those corner lots have to provide a 20-foot building setback on both street frontages. Now, in essence, you can imagine that this really reduces the size of those homes that would be allowed on, on the property. And so the applicant has stated that due to the size and configuration of these properties, that double frontage setback, in essence, really limits the ability to place homes of similar character and style on those lots that are already existing in that portion of the residential subdivision. And so the applicant is requesting a reduction to a certain side lot lines that have frontage to certain streets, and we'll go over those in more detail. But in essence, that's the request for these six corner lots to have reduced setbacks on the side street property lines. And so on your screen, you see the exhibit. This really demonstrates the impact of the request. So for lots, for lot one, blocks one and two, located at the intersection of Eric Drive and Opal Drive, there will be a reduced front yard building setback along Opal Drive from 20 feet to 15 feet. And for lot 10, blocks one and two, located at the intersection of Eric Drive and Harvey Austin Drive, the reduced building setback along Harvey Austin Drive would be from 20 feet to 15 feet. And for lots one and 18, block three, located at the intersection of Emily Court and Harvey Austin Drive, again, the, the setback would be reduced from 20 feet to 15 feet. The future land use plan does designate this property as single-family residential, and the applicant isn't proposing to change the land uses, and so the request is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Based on the concept plan and the development plan, the following conditions are to be considered whenever you're approving the, a development plan or approving amendments to the development plan. They include the request being consistent with the future land use policies and the map like we just looked at. It also includes proposed uses or proposed changes being compatible with the existing and planned uses in the area. And it also includes the general arrangement of streets that conform to the adopted thoroughfare plan and also that the planning furthers the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. The proposed amendments to the planned development district, again, they don't modify any of the approved land uses or densities in the existing PD, nor do they modify any of the streets or access in utilities that are there today. And so in that regard, staff finds that the request is, is consistent with the future land, with the future land use policies, is consistent with the adjoining uses, and consistent with the conditions that we've outlined here on your screen. Staff sent out, staff sent out 18 notices to property owners on September 3rd within the 200-foot notification area. We did receive one contact from a Ms. Jo Johnston. She actually lives at the property that's highlighted with the pink star. She, her property actually wasn't included in the 200-foot notification area, but she heard about it from a neighbor. And so she gave us a call to ask, ask us what was being requested. And once we explained that the land use wasn't changing, it was just a reduction in the building setback, she supported the request. I know that Mr. Varon, he is still heavily involved with HOA, and he's really reached out to a lot of the neighbors directly, and he's had contact with them. But the only contact that staff has received is from Ms. Jo Johnston, who lives at that property highlighted in pink. As far as the makeup of those property owners and who received a notice, several of them were owner occupied. The yellow stars indicate those single-family homes where the residents are also the owners. And so those were people who, who lived there, who received a property owner notification. The blue stars are vacant properties, and the orange stars are properties that are owned individually but are under construction. So there's a couple of homes that are under construction, but they haven't finished yet, and so they haven't been, they haven't been occupied by the new owners. The purple stars across the street, that's a, that's also a planned development district, which is approved for a duplex, and those are, those are rental properties, they're not owner occupied. And then the red stars are vacant churches that are, and again, the one in the PD is the one that's planned for a future senior center, and then the one across the street is also vacant. So that gives you an idea of the amount of property owners that were notified and kind of the occupancy of those different parcels. This item was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on September 14th, and they did recommend approval unanimously, three to zero. And Commissioner Bohack and Commissioner Malott did recuse themselves from that item and filed a conflict of interest affidavit with our city secretary's office. And I believe Mr. Varon Mclemore is in attendance and should be able to answer any questions of the council. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'll exit my screen now.
So, thank you very much. This is also a public hearing, and so I would like to ask if there is anyone that would like to speak for or against. Jan, do you know of anyone that wants to speak at this public hearing?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Then the public hearing is now closed. And council, let's start with Councilmember Hens this time. Do you have any questions for Mr. Mclemore or for Ms. Shapen?
Not, not too much. I'm curious if, if there's been a kind of a resurgence in interest in those, in those particular lots, and that's, that's kind of driving this? Or if there are any plans to make a push to sell those? I love seeing the development, I was just more or less curious. No, no critical questions?
Yes, sir, all. In fact, this came up when we had the builder who is building the two homes that are under construction now. He originally wanted to. He originally wanted to purchase three home, three home sites and build three homes at one time. And this, this problem came about, and so he has stated that he is still intent on purchasing the third, the lot up next to the two homes that are under construction. As far as the development is concerned, we've sold two homes in the last three or four months that were sold before they finished completion. And we have, in the last six weeks, I have closed four lots, as far as individual homeowners who are planning on building up there. In fact, there's one home back on Mc, East Mclemore Court that did the dirt, started the dirt work this week. So there has been a absolutely amazing resurgence of interest in the neighborhood. I think that's helped by the Senior Citizens Center coming there and just by the fact that people have found out and figured out what kind of hidden gem we have there.
Absolutely, that's wonderful, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
No, I don't have any questions, Ms. Chafin answered all of them for me.
Okay, terrific, Ms. Fisher?
Just a few. And with, you'll have to enlighten me, because I don't know, with a Plan Development, are there specific guidelines for the kinds of properties built? Like in, in terms of, of style or any, any other sort of restrictions?
The, the Plan Development District standards themselves don't dictate style or design or architecture. They just dictate the, the land use. And so it calls out for single-family development, which is one single-family structure per lot. I think there are some deed restrictions that have been imposed by the HOA. It has some additional architectural guidelines, and they've got some additional setbacks standards in there to create some conformity amongst the subdivision. But those are, in the deed restrictions, those aren't actually included in the PD Development Standards.
Okay. And I mean, do you see any downside to approving that?
No, it's, it's really, staff considers, considers it a very minor amendment. But because it's part of a PD, we have to go through that PD amendment process. We even, our city engineering department even evaluated the request to make sure there was any kind of conflict with, with side triangle requirements at those intersections. And the building footprint was, was well outside of those dimensions. And so, planning and staff feel that it's a minor amendment, that it's consistent, and it actually will create more of a cohesive character for those homes that are already built in the area.
Okay. And last one, you mentioned that two Planning and Zoning Commissioners recused themselves for conflict of interest reasons. Did, were they involved in like the sale of the property, or are they involved in the sale of the properties or something like that?
So the, the pool, pool royalty firm is assisting Mr. Mclemore in the sale of these properties. And Commissioner Malott and Commissioner Bohack both work for pool royalty. And so they, they reduced themselves to, to make sure that there wasn't any conflict of interest either real or perceived.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Bolden?
No, basically all my questions been asked, I just maybe have one question. The setback, was that making a difference in the size of the structure? And maybe the homeowner association has a, some type of restriction on size?
The setbacks do have the effect of limiting the buildable area of the lot. So the larger the setbacks, of course, the smaller the home that you can place on the lot. The zoning ordinance doesn't have any minimum size requirements for the structures themselves. Sometimes HOAs or deed restrictions will have minimum structure sizes for the subdivision, and I can let Mr. Mclemore speak to that.
Yes, we have an Architectural Review Committee that looks at all the plans and builders who are trying to build in the neighborhood. And three of those lots, it would affect the square footage requirements that we've set forth. Now, there can be some variances on that, but the three back lots would need to be of a larger square footage to keep the continuity of the neighborhood and to match the other two houses that are built on the other two corner lots. So that's, that's what we're trying to prevent and be able to have, you know, a house that matches what's already been built.
Thank you.
Okay, if that concludes our, our questions, the Chair is ready to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass Agenda Item C, oh, sorry, Agenda Item B. Let's see. Amending the terms with a, within the Planned Development District within the City of Nacogdoches for lots one and 10, Block One, lots one and 10, Block Two, and lots one and 18, Block Three of the Austin Hill subdivision.
Sir. I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Mclemore.
Thank y'all very much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Agenda Item C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and give staff direction regarding the Boys and Girls Club, Clubs, Club of Nacogdoches. And we have Mr. Bray, I believe?
Yes, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and City Council, Brian Bray, your Director of Community Services. The Boys and Girls Club have had an agreement with the city for almost 10 years. Part of that agreement is for the club to provide you with an annual report. It covers items like general pool use of the Lehman Swim Center, pool attendance, attendance and use of other club facilities. Since Steve Davidson has been the CEO of the club, we have worked much closer with him and them being his staff. In fact, over the past two years, we've partnered with them to use their facility for basketball season, volleyball season. And just last year, we passed along our more advanced gymnastics classes to the club, because they had the more advanced gymnastics equipment in exchange. They're promoting our younger classes, so it's been a great relationship. I know that this presentation is tied directly to the Lehman Ice Center, excuse me, Lehman Swim Center, I apologize for that name. But Steve Davidson's chuckling. But with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to pass this over to Steve to continue his presentation.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Welcome, Mr. Davidson, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Brophy and council members, and thank you, Brian, for the introduction. So we, we have a PowerPoint presentation that was sent to everybody prior to the meeting. But for those people who are online, if they wanted to see it, want to be able to share with them, so. So as Brian had mentioned, when the Boys and Girls Club, which originally started in 1992 over at Mike Moses and built the club, there in 1998, entered into the idea of building an aquatic center. They went into a partnership with the city and Nacogdoches Independent School District. And after a campaign and a lead gift from the Lehman family, that center was opened in 2000, I'm sorry. The Aquatic Center serves a number of roles in our community. It's used by the children who are members of the club. It's used by Nacogdoches Independent School District swim team and the high school and the middle school. It's used by the citizens of Nacogdoches. We do three times a day, we do general swim in one to three hours slots, Monday through Friday, and then we have a two-hour period on Saturdays, and we are closed on Sundays. And they're available for rentals by any resident residing in Nacogdoches. We also do lifeguard trainings, we do all the lifeguard training for Splash Kingdom. We do general CPR classes for anybody. We do swim lessons both for youth and adults, we do collaborative programs with the local Boy Scouts, and we do water aerobics programs. So one thing to, to point out, the general swim did fluctuate a little bit during the summer of this year. During the pandemic situation, we worked with Brian to open up for a three-hour time slot in the afternoon. And then after a period of about 30 days, we opened up in the evening as well. We wanted to kind of gradually open to make sure that we stayed in compliance and were able to can, control the situation. This past year, the club was open 1,500 hours. Last year was open 1,750 hours, 1,500 this year during the school year in the summer. And that's predominantly because we were closed from May, May 16th through the month of, excuse me, March 16th through the month of May, opening back up on June 1st. Now, we were able to open if we wanted to on May 1st in accordance with the governor's allowance. But we wanted to make sure that we had everything in order regarding PPE, equipment, sanitation, disinfecting, training our staffs, and things like that. We chose to stay closed through the month of May, and we did get that approved by both Brian and Chief Kiplinger. Total patrons, we have 4,339. 3,000, 3,008 of those are adults, 1,331 of those are youth. The number, the total number is very similar to years past, but we do have an increase this year in adults and a little bit of decrease in youth. And that's predominantly because we had to modify our swim lessons this past summer. We weren't able to do direct one-on-one swim lessons where we would actually have direct contact with those youth. We had to do it more in a group setting, so we had to reduce the amount of kids that we could do swim lessons for this year. Other youth served, again, our swim team, we have 170 participants, our swim lessons, we had 123 participants, and that's approximately 50% less than what we had last, we had 240 last year. But that again is because of the COVID restrictions in regards to safe distancing and unable to do one-on-one lessons. And our birthday parties are down because we haven't been able to do rentals. We have, we have stopped doing rentals since March 14th and, and still have not started to do those again. So we've had 14 parties that had 210 participants. Some general information about the club, our total membership, 1,509. Last year was 1,514, so, excuse me, 1,513, so very similar. Our school year numbers are up, you'll see a reduction in our summer members. Again, that's about 50% of our total membership from last year for our summer program. And again, that's because of restrictions, we were only able to do a, a 10-to-1 ratio. So normally where we would serve about 240 kids in the after school, excuse me, in the summer program, we had to reduce that to about a third of that number, which was 80, because we had a 10-to-1 ratio of staff to members. Our football program is, is very similar from last year, 300. And in our gymnastics, we have 218. We have not chosen to do football this year, so, you know, the, our contract goes from October through September, so you'll see that in the numbers next year. But again, just for safety precautions, we chose not to do football. Club hours, we're open Monday through Friday from three to seven, and during the summer months from eight to five. COVID-related club closures, again, started on March 16th. The club, the pool, and the NIPCO Center were all closed. We, we continued to do activities provided by Zoom, we did remote learning, and passed on both educational and funding websites to our families. We did wellness calls to our families to see if there was anything else they could need from us or anything that we could refer them to other agencies. And we provide meals in a grab-and-go system, and the meals average between 100 to 125 meals on a daily basis. The club and pool reopened on June 1st. Again, we met with Brian and Chief Kiplinger to make sure that we were in compliance and, and they were comfortable with what we were doing. And then we opened our NIPCO gymnastics facility on July 1st. During the summer, now in the school year, we had no related COVID cases with our staff or our members during this time period that we've been open since June 1st. So something we're pretty proud of and know now that we are making sure that we are doing everything possible to keep our members and our staff safe. Membership demographics, about 61% boys, 39% girls. Ages under 13, 80%, and over the age of 13 is 20%. Our ethnicity ratios, 38% Caucasian, 20, 29% African-American, 21% Hispanic, and 12% multireece. Family breakdown, both parents, 55%, single parent, 45%. Meals provided to members, again, during the timeframe that, that this contract is in, is in effect. Well, we did 36,189 meals during the school year and 8,940 meals during the summer. So 45,000 meals, that's down about 10,000 meals. And again, because we had a reduced number of kids that came during the summer. Total market penetration, again, 1,509 members. We have 6,300 registered members at the Nacogdoches Independent School District. So our market penetration's about 24%. Of the total children in Nacogdoches Independent School District are members of the Boys and Girls Club, are about a one-to-four ratio. And just kind of our revenue situation, donations and annual campaigns make up about 80, 18% of our annual budget. Fundraising effects, 32%, grants and foundations, 22%, annual contracts, 14%, and membership fees and dues, 14%. And we're projecting potentially a deficit budget of about 30,000 this year. So, open it, open it up to any questions you may have?
Okay, let's see, let's start with Mr. Anderson.
Um, I guess really my question is more of curiosity than anything. Is the, the budget shortfall this year going to affect any services that y'all are able to provide during the next calendar year?
So I believe Mr. Davidson accidentally got off the call.
Oh, did he?
Oh no, I'm still here.
He's still there, okay.
I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how I get back there, there I am.
There you are. Go right ahead.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, Councilmember Anderson, you were asking if, if our shortfall will have any effect on services that we provide?
That you're able to provide, yes.
No, not, not at this point, we are continuing to, to do everything we can possibly do. We did, we did actually incorporate an, another, an additional program during this time period where the kids were doing virtual learning and they were on the Bloom Green schedule, where we actually were open during the course of the day for those children that needed help and couldn't be helped, left home alone. So we were actually open to allow families to drop off their kids at the club, and, and we helped them during the course of the day, make sure they got their homework done.
Great, well, thank you, and thank you and your staff for all that you do.
Well, we appreciate you.
Ms. Fisher?
No ma'am, no questions, I just wanted to say thank you for the great service that you guys provide for our community and for the kids in it. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Bolden?
Um, no question, I guess more of a comment. Is that adults numbers rather large, is that senior citizens?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the entire question.
The adults, that was large number that attend, is that mostly senior citizens?
It's, it's a mixture, actually. We get a lot of the seniors that come during that lunchtime hour, but during the morning and the evenings, we get a lot more business folks.
Oh, okay. You, you mentioned membership, is that like a family membership that you provide?
For the club, it's, it's just an individual membership. As, as you remember, I think there was an attachment that, that Jan Vincent provided where if the people come in and use the pool, they pay a fee of $5 per time, or they can buy a punch card where you can get 20 visits for $60, and it gives you kind of a discount.
Oh, so that's considered a membership?
That, no, that's not considered a membership, the membership is just for the children. So adults do not require a membership.
Require membership, okay.
Membership is strictly 18.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Mr. Hens, do you have anything?
No questions, just super grateful, Mr. Davidson, I always love seeing the numbers of how many people go through there in a given year. It shocked me the first time, and, and not, not anymore, but I'm impressed in the last, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there is no further discussion, that concludes Agenda Item C. And we are going to move to Agenda Item D. And I'm going to recuse myself for my involvement with the Boys and Girls Club and ask Mayor Pro Tim Bolden, would you please take? and ask Mayor Pro Tim Bolden, would you please take over for Agenda Item D?
Wow, okay. Okay, we are now at Agenda Item D. Consider approval of agreement between the City of Nacogdoches and the Boys and Girls Club of Nacogdoches for essential service. And do we need a public hearing on this, open up to the public? Okay, so we have a presentation from the city attorney, the one and only, Ms. Jeff Davis.
Tim Bolden, council members, good evening. Jeff Davis, city attorney, the one and only. The particular item before us at this time represents the agreement between the Boys and Girls Club of East Texas. I certainly won't attempt to replow ground. Mr. Davidson did a very fine job standing forth. All the wonderful services provided by the Boys and Girls Club and the broad extent of those and how it really touches on our community. Just briefly, I would say that this agreement is very similar to agreements we have had in the past. The term of it is for one year. It will commence begin October 1 of this year and go through the end of September of 2021. It sets forth various provisions that provide what the pool facilities will be. It also addresses issues such as pool staffing, which is obviously very important. There are provisions in this agreement that set forth operational hours, days, and then hours during those specific days, as well as summer programs. Of note, I think, and I think it speaks greatly just to the service provided by the Boys and Girls Club. There is a provision that speaks to support for after-school programs. Again, that sets forth various days of those services and hours within those days. We do have various provisions in there that provide protections from liability concerning the city. There is an indemnification clause. I guess the one thing possibly of note that might be a little bit different or maybe a little bit of an enhancement from prior agreements is we have a provision which sets forth in more detail the provision of insurance that would cover the city provided by the club. And we appreciate Mr. Davidson and the club for including us as a named insured with appropriate conditions on those matters. The amount that will be provided in total will be $70,000 for the purposes provided by the Boys and Girls Club. And that will be divided up over 12 payments over the course of the year. Mayor Pro Tim, that largely sets forth a provision. Any questions, I would welcome those at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. Mayor, we want to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve. Okay, on Agenda Item D, consider approval of agreement between the City of Nacogdoches and the Boys and Girls Club of Nacogdoches for essential service. Could we have a motion?
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number D as written.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, disapprove, say nay. The motion to approve, consider approval of the agreement between the City of Nacogdoches and the Boys and Girls Club of Nacogdoches for essential service has been approved.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Bolden. Excellent job. Agenda Item E, receive a report, hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful. And we have the beautiful Katie Russell, Rudisil, sorry, with K&amp;B with us. Good evening, Katie.
How are you?
Doing very well, welcome.
Mayor, I'll give a little bit of a brief background if that's acceptable.
Please, go right ahead.
Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful has partnered with the city since 2001. When we entered into an agreement with them, it started in 2001 and was finalized in 2003. And since that time, K&amp;B has accomplished a number of projects all focused on beautification, recycling, education. They've had great successes with litter pickup and events that we're all familiar with, like the Blueberry Festival. Fortunately, we didn't get to celebrate that this year, but I'm sure you've all seen the hard workers and the volunteers out there for that. The Blooms Program, the beautification part, have provided bulbs all across the city. They also maintain a tree nursery out at the city landfill that our Parks Department have access to. So as with most entities, K&amp;B has struggled in 2020 because their events are public. But I'm sure that Ms. Rudisil would be happy to share the successes that the board has had with the generous support of you, mayor and council. So, mayor, it's okay, may I turn it over to Ms. Rudisil?
Yes, that'll be fine, thank you.
You go ahead and share my screen. This way. Can you all still hear me?
Yes.
I don't know where I went. Okay. I apologize. Okay. Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful's mission is enhancing the community by encouraging individual responsibility in the areas of litter prevention, waste reduction and beautification. Our angle coming from the city allows K&amp;B to continue fulfilling our missions. K&amp;B's partnership, like Ryan had said, with the city provides volunteers for city events, ongoing beautification efforts and promotion of available recycling programs, and then the ability to educate the community on all of our programs.
Katie, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. We do not see any.
Law. Yeah.
It didn't work, but you can continue if you want.
Hold on, I can try one more time. It may have come out there. Yes, sir.
It looks like it's loading. Okay, so we see the people of Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful.
Right, perfect. Still, we still see it?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful consists of three different entities. We have our Board of Director, which they are 100% volunteer. And it is a working board, so each volunteer, I mean, each director is always out there volunteering at one of our events. I'm myself, the executive director, it's a part-time job. And my job duties, you know, are kind of in a nutshell. I attend the annual Keep Texas Beautiful Conference, which was virtual this year. I recruit and manage volunteers and interns and works with boards of plan programs and events. And then is also responsible for website, media promotion, record-keeping. And then for the most part, we have held, as long as I've been there, two to three interns per semester. This summer semester, we had one, but we were able to keep two SFA students as interns working on social media in the spring. We have various national, state and local partners, of course, the city of Nacogdoches, Nacogdoches County, the public library, post office, Stephen and I've also state university, various independent school districts, and then we're also affiliates of Keep Texas Beautiful and Keep America Beautiful. Local burning, lumberjack printing, clothes and armor, STS Electronics Recycling and Pilgrim's Pride. And then we also have various community partners. Our current programs are Tech Cycle, Fall Sweep, MLK Day of Service, Nacogdoches Blooms, Adopt a Highway, K&amp;B Tree Nursery, Landscape Leadership Award, Festival, Litter Management, Litter Pool Lending Program and other various education programs. Our Tech Cycle is normally done three times per year. We had to kind of take a step back for the one that we normally have in the spring, but our next one is slated for October 24th, so we're really excited to put that up and moving again. Our Fall Sweep is part of the Keep Texas Beautiful Initiative. And we normally do four to five service projects. This past year, we did four, all held consecutively on the same day. We did Adopt a Highway, Tree Farm Beautification and then bulb planting at Bonita Creek. And then the Tech Cycle. This year, we were also able to be a part of SFA's MLK Day of Service. K&amp;B was able to provide service areas for 130 volunteers at three different locations. We collected 2,000 pounds of recyclable tech. We had 48 cubic yards of litter and debris taken from BQJ and Propert Elementary and then Adopt a Highway. They collected 17 bags of litter. Excuse me. Our annual blooms project is going on right now. If you haven't received a mailer, it's on the way. It's our 23rd year of this and any of the beautiful daffodils that you see in the spring and right now, there are brighter lilies and oxbow lilies that have started to come up and bloom at various historic locations in town. All of that is part of the Blooms Project and our beautification initiative. We also host Adopt a Highway normally four times a year. This year, we've only been able to do it twice. It's part of the Don't Mess with Texas campaign and we normally can accommodate about 40 to 50 volunteers per year. The Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful Tree Nursery is located at the city landfill, but in the front. It's maintained by K&amp;B volunteers as well as directors. And the trees are donated for planting in public areas. And then also, we have an annual tree sale. Landscape Leadership Award is presented to businesses and members, business, I'm sorry, and community members to recognize beautification efforts. The 2020 Landscape Leadership Award winner was Taliesin on North Street for going above and beyond what is actually spelled out in the city ordinance. We have not been able to do the presentation yet, but hopefully sometime in October, we will be able to present it to them. K&amp;B is responsible for litter abatement at two of the larger festivals. We do the Blueberry Festival and the Nine Flags Festival. We were able to complete the Nine Flags Festival, but unfortunately, Blueberry Festival, that's not a choice. Our litter bin lending tool allows anybody to, within the community, to request litter bins via our website. They are set up and ready to go and include two bags per bin. And then they pick them up at Chamber of Commerce and then they're returned sometime within the next week. Is it going to go? There we go. Our educational programs are kind of vary this year compared to in the past. We have educational activities, but the majority of them are hands-on and in-person. So the way we have tried to move in the direction of social distancing is to go through a social media initiative, which is, we had a lot of help with our interns this year with that. We put into effect a Transformation Tuesday, which kind of brought about ways that you can reduce litter and reduce waste in your own life just by changing one or two things. We also had in October 2019 Trash Talk. That was a play written by our board member, Suzie Lauer, and then it debuted at the public library. Due to COVID, it's had our scheduled showings have changed and they will hopefully happen later this fall. I think I skipped one. There, sorry. One of our biggest achievements was Can-Am for a Cause. This was, we were the recipients of a 2019 Can-Am Defender Max as a six-seater as part of the Can-Am for a Cause program. We submitted an application and highlighted the things that we do and how we would use it within the community. And they thought we were awesome. And so they decided to donate one to us. Thank you guys very much for inviting me to this meeting and thank you for all the support that you do give our organization. We look forward to working with you guys in the future. And that's all I got.
That's great, that's a lot of great information. Does any member of council have a comment or a question for Katie? Yes, okay, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I just have a couple. Hey, Katie, how are you?
Hey, how are you?
Fine, thank you for that presentation and for the work that you guys do. I saw in your presentation, you mentioned that you guys do promotion of available recycling programs. And I was just wondering what that, if you could explain that a little bit more, what that actually means?
On our website, we have what is available. And then I also, we worked earlier in the fall last year to get a brochure that was, had the five Rs on one side, or not a brochure, excuse me, a rack card that had the five Rs on one side and then where to recycle within Nacogdoches on the reverse side. We tried to make sure that everything that was on there was relevant to what was happening in our city at the time.
How did you guys distribute those materials or where?
We distributed to the city and then we have them at the chamber. And then we distribute them to, or our board members distribute them to various businesses and locations around town.
Cool. And then I don't know if you remember, but last year, as part of a follow-up on the workshop that we had on recycling, I think that we had your annual presentation a little bit after that. And so we kind of started putting two and two together and brainstormed on the idea of having you guys work with maybe Amy Mahaffey to come up with more recycling promotional materials. And I was wondering if you guys were able to follow up with that? And if not, if that would be something that y'all could do?
That was, that was the rack card. Amy and I worked together.
Cool, cool, awesome. Is there going to be a new one or an updated one?
I mean, that's something that we can work on. I mean, it's, it's, I feel like it's pretty up to date.
Okay.
But.
So you guys do just distribute it then on an ongoing basis?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I have just one question and maybe a two-part to it. But anyway, I know this person has been holding old cell phones, like flip phone, thinking they're going to come back and make a big impact on the world. Now, that is for October, is if you want to recycle those, October. And also on your website, you had, where it stated, and it was saying box TVs. They would, you would take flat screens anytime, right, for recycle?
Flat screens up to 32 inches. Anything larger than that is, it's difficult to, when they come to pick it up, they, they, there's no efficient way to maneuver those. So, we take, but not box TVs, not at 12 inches.
Where would this person get rid of a box TV that?
The Habitat for Humanity Resort used to accept them. We do not have an outlet, that is something that I was working on this afternoon. To recycle them.
Okay, because, you know, even though the TV may work, it don't work good with sudden link in the mix. It's that old. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hands, did you have anything?
No ma'am, no questions, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
No, no questions, just thank you to Katie and all of the directors of K&amp;B for all that you do.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Katie. I hope you have a great evening and thank you for your work.
Thank you, thank you all for having us.
Uh-huh, bye-bye. We will move now to Agenda Item F, consider approval of an agreement between the city of Nacogdoches and Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful for essential services. And we have our city attorney again, Mr. Jefferson Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, Jeff Davis, city attorney. I have my contract hat on, so here we go again. Katie did a beautiful job with the presentation, so I again won't go into great detail unless there's a particular matter that we need to address further. I would say that the agreement is very similar to the agreement that we've had in past years. Our present agreement will expire. Our present agreement will expire at the end of this month. So the term for the new agreement will begin October 1 and will continue through the end of September 2021. It does state for, set for the Statement of War. And I'll touch on a few of the major things there, important things. KMB will, they'll provide planning and the promotion of recycling efforts in our city. They'll also provide for planning promotional activities that will advance the general beautification of the city. And that's always a good thing. They'll also undertake educational activities in furtherance of recycling and our beautification efforts in the city. There is a provision whereby there will be a report that will be provided to council on their activities. And there also is a provision that provides for accounting of their finances and various activities for transparency. And so feel that that's very appropriate on the city side of the obligation under this agreement. We will, as we have in years past, collect and distribute the donations that are made on the water bill, on sanitation bill to KMB. Also, in, in further support, there will be a set $2,000 amount that will be, that will be forwarded to KMB. There are various protections in there with regard to indemnifications. We also have provisions for insurance that includes the city as additional insured and waivers of subrogation. That largely concludes the contract. Any questions, Mayor?
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Okay, don't see any heads going up and down. I know we had a copy and we were able to review that. So if there is no discussion or any questions, the chair will entertain a motion.
Okay, motion for this would be, agenda item F.
Yes, sir.
I'm making motion to approve, consideration approval of an agreement between the City of Nakadoches and Keep Nakadoches Beautiful for Essential Service.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item Number F. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor.
Agenda Item G, Receive a Report, Hold a Discussion and Provide Staff Direction Regarding Municipal Court Operations. I believe we have Judge Watts with us this evening.
Yes, Mayor Council, good evening. Can everyone see my presentation?
Not yet. Let's see.
One more time. Close that off, just a moment.
Okay. Let's see.
Okay, can you see them now?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, great. Work, okay. Okay, so I am Heather Watts. I'm a municipal court judge and I'm here to talk about the municipal court operations in 2020. Okay, so recently I've been asked, what does the municipal court do? The municipal court processes classy misdemeanors within the city of Nakadoches. While the majority of these are traffic citations that are committed within the city, the court also handles many other types of cases. We handle such classy cases such as public intoxication cases, assault family violence cases, possession of drug paraphernalia cases, theft cases, minors in possession of alcohol, minors driving under the influence, juvenile cases under the age of 17, code violations and animal seizures. These cases all have hearings which come in various forms. They come, the most common of which are arraignments, which are your initial pleas of guilty or not guilty. We have pre-trial hearings where a prosecutor is present and the prosecutor in the municipal court is the city attorney. We have show class hearings where the defendant has not been complying with a court order in their case. Animal hearings, these mostly consist of animal cases by animal services and have very strict time limitations. There are bench trials, which are trials before the judge, and jury trials. We are a full functioning court and the court is run in similar ways to higher courts. And just as the higher courts have done during the pandemic, we successfully transformed into a virtual court. Additionally, I'm on call every day to magistrate defendants arrested for these offenses. So if you see the lights on at the court on Saturday night or Sunday afternoon, that's probably me. While the municipal court is not a court of revenue, in processing citations through the court, we do collect fines which go to the city. Therefore, the amount of fines that are collected by the court are completely dependent on the number of citations that are filed with the court. The fewer the citations that are filed with the court, the fewer the fines that are collected. As you can see from this slide, the number of citations that have been filed with the court have dropped dramatically during the pandemic. This slide shows the number of citations filed with the court in the past six months in this six-month period as compared with the previous two years. So, and only 1,242 have been filed this year. This is compared with 3,710 in 2019 and 4,918 in 2018. Now, there are numerous reasons for the decrease in the number of citations that have been filed with the court in 2020. As Chief CV stated during the pandemic, the police department limited physical contact with the public and therefore traffic enforcement mostly consisted of verbal warnings rather than citations. warnings are not processed through the court. Additionally, traffic was drastically reduced to business and school closures. And I'm sure that we can all recall driving down North Street just a few months ago without a car in sight. Chief CV also stated that the PD is experiencing a high number of retirements and resignations that resulted in 10 vacancies and led the PD Traffic Unit to be reassigned to patrol divisions. These factors have led to the decrease in the number of citations as you see on the table. On the next slide, it shows the decreasing number of citations that have been filed with the court by year. In the fiscal year 2017, 9,424 cases were filed. In 2018, that decreased ever so slightly just to 9,080 cases. In 2019, it jumped a little to 7,926 cases. But so far this year in 2020, we only have 4,051 tickets that have been filed. This is a 57% decrease from 2017. As you can see from this slide, as there have been fewer tickets filed with the court each year, there's also been less revenue connected by, collected by the court. That's because all monies collected by the court come from citations that are filed with the court. This direct correlation can be seen more clearly on the next slide. This slide shows the direct relation between the number of tickets filed and the amount of fines collected by the court. As you can see, the court has processed citations and collected fines at a higher rate than the decrease in the number of tickets filed. This is a direct result of the great work that's been done by my court staff during the pandemic. The numbers reflect the fact that the court never closed access to the public and we just continued as a virtual court from day one of the city's closure. However, a lot of fines, a lot of tickets that are filed with the court must be dismissed as a matter of law. These are called compliance dismissals. This means that this type of ticket is dismissed automatically if the person corrects a problem. As you can see from this slide, the following tickets are subject to compliance dismissal. It's our driver's license, failure to report change of address, driver's license restrictions, fail to display driver's license, expired registration, registration that's not displayed, wrong or fictitious registrations, one license plate, obscured license plate, defective or unsafe equipment, improper window tint and expired disabled parking placards. Additionally, no insurance tickets are dismissed if you have valid insurance on the date and the time of the ticket. And then numerous moving violations are allowed to be corrected by taking defensive driving. In each of these cases, a ticket was written, but the normal fine is not collected as prescribed by law. So we've been asked, what has the court been doing during the pandemic? From day one of the pandemic, the municipal court has always been accessible to the public. On March 15th, when the city closed, the municipal court just transitioned immediately to a virtual court and we continued with business as usual. During this time, all the court staff continued to work full-time and we continued to process citations through the court. People could still pay their citations by mail, through the court Dropbox, online or by telephone. We continued to answer all calls in all cases whose court dates were canceled by the closure or given alternative options to take care of their citations. The municipal court simply transformed into a virtual court and continued with business as usual. We reopened our lobby on May 11th with modifications such as adding a scanner in the lobby so that the documents that are passed back and forth between the defendants and the court staff normally can now be handled through the scanner. Additional changes included the way that the monies and documents that were given to the court, we limited the number of people that can come into our lobby and we removed the bench that is normally in the lobby to discourage group gatherings. So the question's been posed to me, haven't you had a lot of free time during the pandemic because fewer tickets have been filed? And the answer to this is no. The court staff has continued to work full-time, non-stop from day one of the pandemic closure. Even though we've had approximately half the tickets that are normally filed, we currently only have half the staff. Normally there are five employees and myself at the court and currently there are only two. The court processes a tremendous amount of paperwork for every single ticket that's filed. This paper required whether or not there's a dismissal, whether it's paid in full or whether or not there's an alternative means of payment. I'm very proud of the continuous work that's been done by my staff. So all courts in Texas are guided by the Office of Court Administration. And according to the Office of Court Administration, municipal courts must hold hearings remotely if possible. So starting June 15th, the court has held telephonic hearings four days a week. They're scheduled in blocks of 10 minutes from 10 to 4. These telephonic hearings allow defendants the opportunity to speak with me as the judge and enter their initial plea. Additionally, we've obtained a Zoom license from the Office of Court Administration. And that is how we hear pre-trial hearings, minors hearings, juvenile hearings, assault family violence hearings and animal hearings. Those are all held via Zoom. If a defendant doesn't have a way to access Zoom, then they may enter the court and we provide them Zoom access. Zoom works really well. Recently, we had a three-hour animal seizure case via Zoom. We had eight witnesses and over 30 exhibits. So I've been asked about the court's ability to, inability to hold open court. The court does not have a large backlog of cases. We immediately transitioned to a virtual court and all the cases are per-processed virtually. The only cases that are waiting for the physical court to open are 31 cases that are waiting trial. These are only though 31 cases out of the 4,051 cases that we've processed so far this year. All the other tickets have been processed or they're currently scheduled for a court date this fall. As I touched on earlier, the Office of Court Administration limited in-person jury trials only to higher courts until December 1st. In the meantime, our courts move forward with reopening procedures. These include improved ventilation for the court, ordering a mask for defendants that don't have one, removal of court benches to help with social distancing, obtaining an infrared thermometer for temperature checks upon entering the courtroom, glass around the jury box and in-between the juror's seat and glass around the bench and witness stand. So in summary, the number of cases that are filed with the court are down due to COVID-19. But during the pandemic, the court's been accessible to and providing services to the public. We're currently working with the city and adapting the courtroom and in preparation for in-person trials so that everyone can enter the courtroom safely. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Let's start with Mr. Bolden.
Am I mute? No, I'm good. It was a couple of things. You said originally you were working with the five employees and now you are at two employees?
Yes, we do.
So the three employees?
Well, that is a question more for the city. I was hoping to hire a third in March when the pandemic hit. That was put on hold during the COVID crisis and I have not been told exactly whether or not those positions have been funded.
Okay, thank you. You know, one of the things that you listed as a Class C misdemeanor, I was surprised. And that was assault, family violence.
Yes.
That would be a much higher charge. And does that, I mean, that requires or could require a jury trial?
It could, yes, yes. We actually handle a lot of assault, family violence cases, unfortunately. We only handle the Class C level. It can be a higher charge and can actually go as high as a felony. They do take into consideration a lot of times the Class C charges in order to enhance other assault, family violence cases.
But you don't make that distinguish, distinction between family violence being a Class C or felony, right? That's done before we get to you?
Yes, that's done before it gets to me.
All right. Now, well, thank you for your report. I, that was enlightening.
Thank you.
Mr. Hands?
Would you mind touching base just a little bit on some of the, what you've observed with like the jury selection process? I understand you guys have been proceeding along and I've got called into jury duty, not here but elsewhere, and it keeps getting postponed. How much of a challenge has that been working through some of those COVID obstacles?
Well, we're hoping, we're hoping, right now we've actually gotten bids and this has been submitted to the city. We're hoping to actually have glass in-between the juror's seats themselves and around the jury box to make the jurors feel safer. We do not, the Office of Court Administration right now says that they do not want us holding jury trials at the municipal court level. That is, the higher courts are, I believe are allowing that maybe. At the Class C level, they specifically prohibited that until after December 1st. And that date does keep changing. Last week, when I presented the slide, it actually said December 31st. And after I submitted the slide in, that number has now, it's, the date's now backed up till December 1st. And they said now after December 1st, we could try in-person jury trials.
Goodness, I appreciate that. I can only imagine, just seeing mine be pushed from June like three or four different times, I can only imagine that's a, that's an awful lot to keep up with and a lot of steps to take to make sure the jurors do feel safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
No, no questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Fisher?
Just a comment, it seems like you guys have done a really terrific job without skipping a step of, of continuing the work that you do and, and with so few employees. So thank you and good job.
I appreciate that. Thanks. My staff is really wonderful. They've done a great job.
Judge Watts, I wanted to ask you, now you have been with us, has it been a year, a little over a year?
Yes, a year in July, yes.
Okay, so wow, you'll never forget your first year with the city.
That's true. I've enjoyed it though.
Good, good, good. Well, thank you and, and thank you for your work in these, during this extraordinary circumstances. So we appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Let's move to Agenda Item H, Consider an Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 1808-9-19 Appropriating Various Amounts in accordance with budget adopted for the ensuing fiscal year. And this is going to be Fire Chief Keith Kiplinger. Good evening, sir.
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me tonight. This is going to be a, this is going to be a fantastically short one if I can get my presentation to pop up.
It was there. It was there.
And there we go.
Okay.
Okay, are we good?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. So coronavirus has obviously brought a lot of challenges, uh, to our community and our opportunities to respond. But the CARES Act is actually giving us, given us a, a couple of opportunities to make our workforce a little bit safer. Uh, this request is for a budget amendment and authorization to purchase a second set of firefighter turnout gear as part of our coronavirus response. The federal government, uh, has produced a document recommending, uh, cleaning and dis- disinfecting of turnout gear after any potential COVID exposure. That cleaning, uh, of the gear requires washing it, uh, disinfecting it, and then letting it air dry. Uh, that takes an extended period of time. So currently, we issue our firefighters one set of gear per person. So following an exposure to COVID nineteen, or really anything else, there's no effective way to disinfect the gear or to clean it without compromising our availability for the next call. So this request is to purchase fifty-eight additional sets of gear through the HCSD contract for a total cost of a hundred fifty-seven thousand three hundred seventy. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let's, uh, let's start, uh, let's see, let's go back with Mr. Hands. Do you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
No questions for me.
Ms. Fisher?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Bolden? Uh, you will need to unmute, Mr. Bolden.
Who keep muting me, huh? Miss Dan? No, ma'am, no question.
Okay, great. Well, that makes sense. We went over this, I believe, last week. Pam had gone over it with, with the budget. Uh, so then if there are no questions and, uh, no discussion, uh, then Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass Agenda Item H as it's written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item H as written. Uh, if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Agenda Item I, consider approval of the twenty-twenty-one TechStop Routine Airport Maintenance Program, uh, ramp grant propos- grant project proposal, and we have Joseph Lu, I believe, our airport manager.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, City Council members, it's great to be with you again. It's, uh, hard to believe that it's been a year since I was here first, uh, for your consideration of the twenty-twenty ramp grant. And as you may re- remember, it's the Routine Airport Maintenance, Maintenance, uh, Program, uh, Grant Program, uh, distributed by TechStop. And it's a fifty-fifty grant up to a hundred thousand dollars for the airport. Uh, the city accepts federal grant funds for the airport projects, and therefore we're required to participate in the TechStop grant grant. With financial three projects up to a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it's, it's a very valuable, uh, program for the airport and for the city. Uh, we were able to get a lot of, uh, great projects taken care of this year, even though we were slowed down because of, of the COVID, uh, pandemic. We did assist numerous, uh, air flight med helicopters from with COVID patients being transferred to larger cities for treatment, and also provided services to numerous, uh, military aircraft. You can see some of the programs here are mandatory. Uh, the Stormwater, uh, Pollution Prevention Plan, Herbicide, Pesticide, Airport Light Repair and Maintenance. These things are mandatory, as I, as I said. Also down below, there's a Fuel Maintenance, uh, Farm Maintenance Program, which just in twenty-twenty was made available to us, and that's a great asset for the airport. We do have to change our filters and have all the pumps calibrated every year. And now we're able to, uh, get a fifty-fifty grant for those projects as well. And as you can see, the other projects are normal maintenance for the airport. Uh, we do have a covered shelter that I was gonna try to get done in twenty-twenty. That didn't happen, so I put it on the list for twenty-twenty-one, and we'll try to get that taken care of, uh, this year. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those at this time.
Okay, uh, let's start with Mr. Anderson. Do you have any, anything for Mr. Sepulou?
No, no questions for me.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
None, ma'am, thank you.
Uh-huh, Mr. Bolden?
Uh, no, ma'am.
And Mr. Hands?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, these all look like great projects. Um, I, let's see, uh, if there's no discussion, uh, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, that's, uh, Agenda Item L. Uh, make a motion to, oh, aye, yes, uh, make, uh, consider approval of the twenty-twenty-one TechStop Routine Airport Maintenance Program Grant Project Proposal.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded that we, uh, approve Agenda Item I. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Sepulou.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Uh, Agenda Item J, consider an agreement between the City of Nacogdoches and North Star Publishing Incorporated.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, look who we have. Well, hello.
Yes, I have my intern working late.
The boat party.
Yeah.
I'm Hannah Anderson, uh, Community Services Assistant Director, and I am very pleased to present this evening a free playground. Let me just share my screen. Can y'all see that?
Not yet.
Okay. Oh, I have to. Here we go. Okay. All righty. So at the beginning of this year, staff entered a nationwide contest for a free, a free playground called the Great Play Giveaway. And much to our surprise, we won. Uh, as the contest winner, the city receives a playground valued at thirty-one thousand dollars, and we cover the cost of installation, which is about ninety-five hundred dollars. In return, we will participate in some promotional content, like a quote and a photo, uh, and which we will be allowed to review before publication. One of the difficult parts of this process was trying to figure out where to put our new playground. We ended up choosing Festival Park primarily because of the age of the existing play equipment there. If you remember back in twenty-seventeen, the wooden playground, and the one that you see on your screen is the one at Festival Park today. Uh, back in twenty-seventeen, the wooden playground at Sponeta Creek Park was removed pretty quickly, and a new playground was put in. The reason for this removal was significant deterioration of the wood, and the existing playground at Festival Park was put in at the same time as that one, in the nineteen-eighties. So we are hoping to get ahead of any similar type of issue by going ahead and replacing it. Festival Park was also chosen because there are several neighborhoods within walking distance. It is a popular location for large events and festivals, and the new equipment is a similar size to the existing. So as you can see in the background, uh, that's the existing. And then this clean set, we are gonna be able to keep it and use it. It's, it's still in great condition, and we're gonna incorporate it into the new one. And as far as the new playground goes, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will vote on colors next month. And so that is all I have for y'all, um, and I'm happy to take any questions about, uh, the new playground.
Okay. Uh, does, does any member of council, uh, have a question? Yes, Ms. Fisher?
Just one. Um, I saw in the materials that, um, you guys were gonna use the, you guys had funds to replace picnic tables, um, that y'all were gonna use for the installation. Uh, was that just funds left over from the replacement of the picnic tables, or did the picnic tables not get replaced?
So we, um, at the, uh, with, sort of when COVID hit, we looked at our budget and held off on some items, and so we had this money, um, that we could designate for it. So no, the picnic tables were not replaced, and, uh, we ended up having this expense, and so we were able to, to reallocate those funds. But in a typical year, we make sure to budget money to replace picnic tables because they get a lot of love, a lot of use during the year. And, um, so we were, we were happy to be able to, to reallocate those funds.
So those picnic table replacements will not be forgotten. They're just being postponed?
Exactly.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Looking for hands? No. Okay, if not, uh, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass Agenda Item J as it's written.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no further discussion, uh, those in favor of approving Item J, uh, please, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Okay, hearing that, motion passes. Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
Cutie. Um, moving to Agenda Item K. Consider approval of an agreement between the City of Nacogdoches and the Convention and Visitors Bureau for Professional Services. And I believe we have Sherry Morgan?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, our contract is, it's about eight pages in length, and I believe y'all have received a copy of it in your packets. Um, it is pretty much the same contract that has existed with some additions, um, that take into account, um, the subsidy that was approved recently. And those, the changes can be found on page three of the document. And, um, it is that Item C. As a result of the unpredictable and negative economic impacts resulting from the COVID nineteen pandemic, the city acknowledges that in order for the CVB to effectively fulfill the public purpose obligations set forth above in Section Two of this agree- agreement, additional funding is required. Therefore, in order to assist the CVB in its accomplishment of the required statement of work, the city will provide additional resources above and beyond the agreed-upon hotel occupancy tax levels for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-twenty, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-one, in an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand four hundred dollars to assist with administrative costs, and then an additional amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars to assist with marketing costs. The supplemental funding shall be provided in accordance with the provisions of the annual budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one for the city. And the other changes are in our reporting. So yes, on page four of the agreement, uh, Item F. Within thirty days after the end of each quarter in the fiscal year, the CVB shall deliver to the city manager a written report of expenditures relating to the work with specific allocations and expenditure information as to hotel occupancy taxes and to unaudited financial statements for the quarter just ended, including a minimum, at, a minimum, a balance sheet and income statement. Within forty-five days after the end of each quarter in the fiscal year, the CVB shall conduct a meeting on at least three days' advance published notice to present the financial report for the quarter just ended and obtain public input on it and the work. Um, so that varies, uh, before contractually, our reporting, um, with one mid-year report and then an end-of-the-year report. Um, but other than that, it is the, the standard contract that we have entered into in, in previous years.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any member of council have a question?
Um, Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, Ms. Mark?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that the supplement, uh, and I was, adds up to somewhere around eighty-three thousand dollars? Sixty-one and twenty-two?
Let me find it again. Yes, there's sixty-one four, sixty-one thousand four hundred dollars for it, that would cover administrative cost in our line item, um, from our, the CVB budget, and then an additional amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand to assist with marketing costs.
Okay, I, I thought it was originally gonna be like one oh, one oh nine.
Uh, that is a really good question. Um, that was my understanding as well. Um, I just didn't do the math on this contract. But I believe it was, uh, right at a hundred and eight thousand and some change that was finally agreed upon.
There's a twenty-four thousand two hundred in a separate agreement.
What was that, Mayor?
There's another twenty, not to exceed twenty-five thousand two hundred may be provided for the supplementation of CVB operations. So, but it's a separate agreement. It's not a part of, of this agreement.
Okay.
That, that's, that's correct. Mayor, I, did I unmute myself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just very briefly, and that, Councilmember Bolden, that's an excellent question. Uh, just as a brief reminder, and I anticipate it will probably be, appear on agenda next month. Uh, we do have a separate agreement, uh, with the CVB regarding the, uh, uh, our employment agreement. Um, and that additional amount that will add up to the, the total of a hundred-plus thousand will be addressed, um, in that agreement, uh, through, I think, some, some insurance provisions.
Thank you. I just wanna make sure I wasn't looking at that wrong.
No, sir, you're looking at it absolutely correctly, and that's a very good question. But that'll be addressed, the remainder will be addressed, I anticipate, next month in that agreement.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, does anyone else have anything? Okay, if not, Chair is ready to entertain a motion.
I was lost my, what was, uh, I, Agenda Item? I was looking for some information, and I went away from my Agenda Items.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item K as it is presented to us.
I'll second that.
Okay, been moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item K as it is written. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. And Agenda Item L, consider approval of multiple indefinite deliverable indefinite quantity contracts. Um, and I believe we're gonna hear from Bart Allen. Good evening, Bart.
How y'all doing?
Doing well.
Mayor, uh, City Council, uh, this evening, uh, I need to talk to y'all about approving the, uh, uh, bulk chemical contracts. And September first, twenty-twenty, we received bids to purchase the annual bulk chemicals that were, were not in a renewal period. We had several that, that did renew for one more year. Uh, I can go into that later if you'd like, but, uh, anyway, uh, in this bid, we bid on, uh, activated carbon, liquid alum sulfate, uh, and hydro ammonia and chlorine gas. And we had seven suppliers bid on the contract. And the, uh, low bids are as follows. Uh, Cabot Norbit Americas Incorporated for activated carbon at point six-three per dry pound. Uh, Affinity Chemical Company for liquid alum sulfate, aluminum sulfate at point oh-five-five-seven per dry pound. And DXI Industries, uh, received low bids, or had low bid for anhydrous ammonia and chlorine gas. Uh, and hydro ammonia was a dollar twenty-one per pound, and chlorine gas is seven hundred and forty-two dollars per ton, uh, which it went up a little bit from last year, but not, not significantly, but, uh, anyway, uh, we're, we've got everything, uh, together for another year. Uh, uh, we recommend that you, uh, award this, uh, these annual contracts to the, the low bid, uh, which is gonna be Cabot Norbit Americas for activated carbon. Uh, Affinity Chemical for, uh, liquid aluminum sulfate, and DXI Industries has a and the hydro ammonia. and DXI Industries has, um, and the hydro ammonia and chlorine gas. Uh, any questions?
Okay, council members, I know there was a lot of information in our packets on, on this. Um, so, um, do, uh, but do any of you have any questions or comments? Can raise your hand or, or nod your head up and down. And I can't see Amel- oh, Mr. Bolden, go right ahead.
No.
And I can't see Amelia. So, Amelia, do you have?
I'm fine.
Okay, good. Um, then, uh, if there are no comments or questions, uh, then I believe we, uh, the Chair can entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass Agenda Item L as it's written.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item L as it is written. Um, if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, that concludes our meeting, uh, for September 22nd of 2020. I hope you all have a pleasant rest of the evening. Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.